June fourth, two thousand twenty-five, start with the slide.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Want to build a sign?
Yes, we are.
Approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Seconded. All in favor? And that's the last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes of May twenty-eighth.
Seconded. All in favor? Town administrator, we can do it.
If we could go to the very top.
Very top, the public. Oh, I'm sorry.
And you were gonna.
We're gonna, we're gonna open up the public hearing.
Yeah.
Actually, tell them where Tom and Dan are.
Tom and Dan are at a, uh, York County, uh, budget meeting tonight.
Yes.
Um, last week, last week, we talked about it and they volunteered to go and so, um, that's where they are. Represent the town of Acton tonight. Uh, so I'd like to open up the, uh, public hearing for, uh, six oh three, uh, for barn lights.
Come on up.
Liquor lights. How you doing, sir?
Hi, Luke.
All right, let me go through my, through my folder here, so it was advertising newspaper. We got, um, the list from the York County Sheriff's Department, there was, um, one call in the last calendar year. Just only one, I've never seen this come back like this, a fire detail that they checked and completed. So I did not receive any complaints or positive statements, nothing via email. Have their liability insurance, completed application, and they have paid the fees, so. Uh, fire chief and code officer also sent an email, and they filed that the inspections are fine, no outstanding issues with either department, so. All my boxes are checked.
Awesome.
Yeah, I guess, open up to the public. Any questions? No? Okay, I don't have any questions.
Nope.
How was your year? Tell us about your year, we came all the way over here.
Uh, all right, so our past year was great, uh, we, we were still hosting weddings, uh, anniversaries, proms. Uh, we've already kicked off the year with a few weddings and now a very busy year all the way up till December.
Yeah.
Um, we're proud of, uh, so this is a liquor license renewal, but, uh, uh, a good chunk of our events are also, uh, uh, non-alcohol, like we did two proms this past May, which is always fun. Um, so we have our bartenders making mocktails, which is kind of trending these days.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're enjoying it, we like being part of the community and meeting a lot of people. Um, we've had weddings from as far away as New York and Rhode Island and Connecticut. But there's always a connection to someone in Maine, grandparent, a parent, or they grew up here. So it's pretty neat, we're, we like being the site of reunions and, uh, and basically celebrations. Yep.
Nice.
Great, we're happy for me.
Yeah, last year, we did a big Halloween event, uh, we do some fun public events like that, that was pretty interesting. Uh, and, um, Harry Potter, lots of other themed events.
Oh, neat.
So keeping busy.
Nice, awesome.
Yeah, yeah, thank you all. Appreciate it.
So it's, um, to make the, any motion will come under the business a little later now, but.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to close up the, uh, public hearing?
On barn lights, I'll make a motion to close up the barn light one. I'll second that.
Six oh six, all in favor? Okay, we're gonna open up the, do I hear a motion to open up the, uh, public hearing for, uh, iron tales?
Make a motion to open a public hearing about, on, uh, iron tales. I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, um. Well, I'm. Okay, and did I do that? I didn't anyways.
Present.
Oh, motion, so you're just opening it, okay.
Okay, so, uh, this one is on iron tales, also ran the newspaper, I did not receive any emails, good, bad, or otherwise, on anything going on down there. Um, Mr. Martinez was also in, completed his application perfectly, has his liability insurance, paid his fees. Uh, email from the fire chief indicates that a safety walk was done and no concerns there. And also from the code enforcement, so that all was clean and perfect. Um, a little more of a police log on this, um, although it looks lengthy, I'm just gonna summarize it because the majority of them are, um, they're traffic or, um, you know, what the sheriff's department tells us is that you gotta look at the call and if he's the closest place, then, um, that's the address that's gonna be used, I don't know if I told you guys that I actually was, witnessed a car accident not too long ago and it just happened to be right in front, that's where all three cars hit each other, but they were all coming down one oh nine, nothing to do with the establishment, but I happened to see it on here that they, you know, they flagged that address, but, so it's a motor vehicle accidents, motor vehicle stops, a lot of, um, alarm, burglary alarm, false alarms. I wanted to ask you about that, I mean, there seems to be, I mean, at least a good dozen on the first page.
Yeah.
It just triggers, when or something maybe?
It's, it, it's deliveries, you know, and, and turnover of delivery people, they don't know the code, they don't know the process. And I know the sheriff's department probably hates me, but I, I, I did install new doors and, and a new alarm pad, but, you know, it, there, there's a process, it's on the paperwork, but when it, you know, like Cisco, you know, I see different drivers all the time, you know, so. It gets set off by these people delivering food, and obviously, you know, can't leave it outside, but, yeah, that's, that, that, that's a problem, and I, I, I honestly, I don't know how to rectify it, you know, without them, you know, if, it would be nice to assume that the drivers, if they don't know how to access confidently, my phone number's there as well.
Right, don't enter.
I can talk them through it, but, you know, they, uh, you know, they choose not to, so.
Um, there are, um, a couple, um, there are a couple of assaults on here with reports taken, um, there's a couple of open line nine one ones that, um, and then there is one, um, they, they indicate a call, just a phone call of an over serve, but the action is that they were not able to locate said person. That just means that somebody called and indicating that, so it's not.
That could have been me.
True or false?
That could have been me.
Okay, so.
I mean, because that's, you know, that's policy, I mean, if somebody, you know, i- if they don't, I have a policy that's hanging, hanging around there, if you, uh, are told, you know, are offered a ride home from a, a, you know, a patron or staff member and you do not accept, you know, welcome back, and if you leave the property.
Your home.
Our first call is, yeah, and I did make, I think like two or three calls last year and.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's three on here, just, it's, it's just a complaint, and it just, they're actually, we'll check on patrol with it.
It doesn't indicate who caused it, it's usually me.
And then there's a couple of nine one one, um, hangups, but you guys don't need to include that, but there's nothing, just the one assault on there. So while you're looking at that, um, because everything else, all the boxes are checked and the sheriff's department did not, um, as they always have the right to give an opinion or share concerns and maybe.
I'm assuming that the assault was the one that took place outside in the parking lot?
Yeah, it doesn't say, that's a problem.
Does it give a date? How about a date?
Uh, there's probably, there's a date on there.
June?
Um, people tell you that.
Yeah.
Again, that, you know. I mean, I guess when I think about the accident that I was in or that I witnessed, I don't know why they would pick one side of the street versus the other.
Well, they do the same thing with Willie's too, you know, if there's an accident out on one of them, you know, they're close.
We gotta take Willie's over Smith's, yeah.
Just because.
It was in August, it's in late August.
What was the action next to the assault?
This is report taken.
Report taken, so, could have been in the road, I mean, that's the thing with the.
I was just gonna say, I, I don't recall that.
You're welcome to look at that after, if you want.
Twenty-ninth of August.
So, fair time.
Yep, yep. So it could have very well been.
Fair.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, if there wasn't a song on property, I would know.
Yeah.
And I would take action, I would call the police myself.
Right, no.
Okay, you guys have any questions?
Nope. I think, I think we know a great one's a pretty young. Time to start much met over there.
Any questions from the public? No?
I'm just curious, uh.
Come on up to the podium.
Oh, we have to, oh, all right. More like a conversation, I, um, I, uh, I co-owned a bar as well at the barn and.
Yep.
We, I'm just curious about the average length of time your patrons stay at your establishment, you know. It depends, it depends, it depends on during the day.
Yeah, it's like.
You know, it, it, that's a good question, because in and out, in and out, during the day, at night, people are generally coming to see the band. And then they have the evening, you know, dinner, drinks, yeah, yeah, yep. It's interesting, we have a, so people are at our place for seven hours. Yeah. So we have to work really hard to keep everything nice and slow.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'm just curious. Yeah, no, just say, you know, the, the biggest thing is keep, you know. Is this for public record, this conversation?
Well, yeah, nobody should exchange numbers, I mean, this.
I, yeah, I mean, I've been doing this for thirty years and.
Yep.
Yeah, it's interesting, you know, thank you, that's all good.
Uh, Bernard, you got a question?
Uh, I don't have a question, are you open to comment?
Yep, question, comment, yep.
I'm Bernard Broder, I live on East Shore Drive. Um, I just wanna say that I think this is a really well-run business and that, given the nature of the business, you have to expect that some things are going to happen. And I also think, let's say, you know, at the extreme that we didn't have these types of businesses in Acton, then, um, isn't that kind of just shifting the burden of such businesses onto other municipalities? It's not like people in Acton don't drink or go to bars and so forth, so, um, you know, I mean, the only concern I hear from neighbors is sometimes the noise, but again, that's the nature of the business and I think it's really, uh, well-run and managed and I think we're lucky to have it here. Thank you.
You're good.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. I, I'm all set.
I'm good, I'm set.
All good? Okay, thanks a lot, Greg, do we hear, do I hear a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, adjourn the public hearing for iron tales at six fourteen.
Seconded. All in favor? Okay, well, we already went down through half the list, we don't do it again, right?
No, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh, town administrator, weekly update?
Um, so first is just a follow-up from last week regarding the North Star agreement. Uh, the board asked me to check with the principal to determine if those are the same rates for all of his companies, and they are, in fact, the same rates. Um, I did speak to the code officer and asked him to, uh, watch the flip that we discussed it and look more at the Southern Maine and, and kind of figure out what he may or may not be able to utilize, um, he's gonna do that. Figured I wouldn't put it back on the agenda until the full board was there anyways, but that's just a little bit of an update for this week. Um, next is just a public thank you for everybody tied to our neighbors helping neighbors that helped with our spaghetti dinner for the Walsh Manchester family last week, last Friday, uh, we had lots of volunteers cooking and lots of people that donated items. We were able to turn over, um, I think a generous donation to that family that will hopefully help, um, refurnish the house once they get settled, so, um, just wanted to thank Hope and John and, um, Shannon and David and Tammy and Dan Crampits and then everybody that brought things along with it, so.
Can I interrupt here for one second? Would you mind?
Of course not.
Okay.
It's, it's next minute.
Uh, it was my daughter's house, uh, everything is, you probably heard, what a fire back in February, and they didn't have any, uh, wrenches insurance, so, every, all the proceeds is gonna help them refurnish the house. And it, the turnout was immense, it was great, uh, wanna thank everyone that came, everyone that didn't come, that sent donations in, and above all, neighbors helping neighbors and Jennifer putting it all together, yes, thank you.
And the office staff and code enforcement staff, because we spent our Friday juggling the window and the real customers, and still doing this as well, so. We appreciate, um, all of them as well. Um, next is just to give you an update in case, um, someone knocks on your door, so. If you follow along the select board meetings, um, over the last few months, several months ago, you saw, um, a couple of individuals talk to the board and ask them if they would consider letting the town of Acton opt into marijuana sales, recreational marijuana sales. Um, it's always common courtesy to have somebody interested in a change in our current rules and regulations to go to the select board, go to the planning board first and ask them, maybe it's something they wanna move forward, um, maybe it's something they'll say, well, you know, we really wanna make an opinion based on just being the five of us, you know, do it through a petition, but the conversation has been had at the public meeting, um, when the individuals came before the board, um, the advice they gave them was go ahead and start the petition process, let's see if you can get enough signatures to get it on the ballot, and then the voters, um, will, um, make a decision, so. Uh, just wanted to update the full board that, um, I have been in communication with an individual, he is a Maine resident, which is all the law requires, you do not have to be an Acton resident, do you petition in Acton, just a Maine, state of Maine resident. Uh, he has drafted a petition, um, that is going to ask the town of Acton to opt into, uh, recreational marijuana sales. Um, step one, and since this marijuana took over is for the town to decide if they're gonna opt in or out, so. Uh, there may or may not be more details in his question, he's kind of working that out, that's between him and his legal team and, uh, he's got some other marijuana contacts, the town doesn't give advice on that, but, um, as I left it with him this afternoon when I had a conversation, it was, uh, he had all those requirements as far as signature address, you know, all the things that the clerk needs to look for, um, and told him that he didn't need to come back before us to proof it or okay it, because we don't do that, we don't wanna look at petitions until they're all done and turned in to us, so. Um, if you see somebody collecting signatures for that, um, it's possible that he's ready to move forward, um, if it comes back to the board, he will be scheduled for a vote accordingly. So, just an update.
So he just started the petition?
Um, yeah, he had, um, I don't know, I think he's still got a little bit of work to do to it, um. We had a, a good conversation, he's got a little bit of work to do, and he was gonna get some advice from the state of Maine, um, marijuana division on, because he was asking me some questions that I'm just not, you know, able to answer, or should I, so, he's gonna reach out and make a few more changes. Uh, next is the May, uh, sheriff's log from the sheriff's department. Uh, first is to let you know that Sam Warren's vehicle was outside of Acton Shapley Patrol for twenty-one point two five hours in the month of May. On May first, uh, deputy handled a theft complaint involving two subjects that live on Emory Mills Road in Shapley. Uh, looks like someone was trying to purchase a camper, um, paid them with, uh, some stolen money, still investigating. May fourth, deputy arrested an individual, thirty-five-year-old from Shapley on a warrant. Uh, May seventh, after brief investigation, a deputy was arrested on an outside standing warrant in Acton. May eighth, a couple of deputies responded to a home on Ross Corner Road for a reported disturbance, a male, thirty-two individual was arrested for violation of conditions release in using and possessing alcohol. May ninth, uh, they conducted a four-hour proactive speed detail on Gore Road, Back Road, Emory Mills in Shapley, twenty-one vehicles were stopped and seventeen were cited for violations. May eleventh, deputies responded to a crash at the Acton Trading Post involving a motorcycle, the motorcycle pulled out in front of, someone, the operator failed to see the Chevy SUV heading east, vehicles collided, uh, looks like minor injuries. May seventeenth, deputies responded to a burglary of a motor home, of a motor vehicle at a home on Goding Road in Acton. Vehicle witnessed a tall, thin male stealing her child's backpacks out of her unlocked vehicle. The male fled in a dark-colored Honda Civic towards the school, no model or plate was given, investigation is ongoing. Uh, May eighteenth, deputy dealt with a resident that was unhappy about restricted land for ATV near Boonies in Shapley. The land had recently become hosted and the male was very unhappy, uh, was unable to access it. May twentieth, deputy responded to a home on Walnut Hill Road in Shapley for a forty-seven-year-old male in mental health crisis. Subject was asked to ride, take a ride to check himself into cr- into a crisis. May twentieth, deputy took a report of a theft of patio bricks taken from a brand-new house on Hopper Road in Acton. Uh, someone also moved a woodpile, dug up the, oh, no, no, someone moved the woodpile stacking it neatly, in parentheses, dug up the bricks and took them. So I took it as they were stacked patios, but no, no, we moved a woodpile, stacked these neatly, dug the bricks up and took them. I like your S in parentheses. Uh, May twenty-second, uh, they conducted a four-hour proactive speed in Acton. Mills Road, H Road, Goose Pond Road, a total of eight vehicles were stopped, three summonses for speeding. Uh, oop, there's more. Uh, May twenty-seventh, subject called dispatch and reported his ex-girlfriend, thirty-three-year-old of Acton, was making suicidal statements by phone and blaming her for his impending suicide, uh, they were able to locate her and take her for help. May twenty-ninth, a couple of deputies medicated an individual, no. It's tough because I'm skipping over the deputies' names and skipping over the parties' names for the privacy, so. Um, so there's a domestic abuse situation on Fox's Ridge Road, let's say that, between a husband and wife, um, they say no crime was committed, but, um, someone was taken to the hospital. May thirtieth, coveted deputies responded to a home on Young's Ridge Road in Acton for a report of domestic disturbance. As a result, blank blank was arrested for being intoxicated and violation of his parole, additionally, uh, there were a couple of warrants out for him. So, yeah, he was held off. All right, so that is the report for Acton Shapley, um, one thing while we're on the Shapley, the sheriff's department kind of leads into the next one, I wanted to remind everybody that absentee ballots for the June tenth election next Tuesday are available, they're only available through the close of business tomorrow night. Remember several years ago, the state changed the deadline for absentees to be three days before the election to give clerks in big cities time to, time to process them and get their, uh, ducks together. Um, we have a lot of, um, I've seen a lot, and I have received some calls about why is Shapley asking for a hundred and fifteen thousand and, uh, why is Acton asking for a hundred and fifteen thousand on the sheriff question and Shapley only asked for seventy-seven? So I just wanted to take a quick minute to clarify that, because you saw some posts on social media. First of all, if you took the time to find Shapley's warrant, page twenty-two, uh, you would see that it actually is article forty-eight and forty-nine. They chose to vote in theirs in two different articles. So forty-eight does in fact raise an appropriate seventy-seven thousand, which there is their half, but forty-nine raises the twenty-seven thousand for the purchase of the contract deputy, so they just chose to do them separately, um, we just have to add them together, so it's actually a hundred and four thousand. That is nine thousand dollars more than Acton, that is true, um.
Less.
Less, come on, I'm just kidding tonight.
I skipped the whole public hearing thing.
Yeah. So, uh, so, yeah, less, so why did Acton ask for nine thousand dollars more? Because when we got our estimate for the contract deputy, it says in there that the second six months of the year are in contract negotiations and that we can expect an increase. We had no idea what that was gonna be, so we put in, we rounded up a figure, we were also told on the car that twenty-six five was an estimate, but the longer we went from purchasing the car, which we first heard about it, I think in December, January, the prices may go up. So our article does allow for nine thousand dollars difference, um, if it passes and we don't need it, we're certainly not gonna give it to them, but we don't wanna have to come back for, you know, the difference in whether the contract negotiations or the car prices go up. That's the difference of the nine thousand, that was our decision, um, and we feel like it was the right one, so.
And, and that the towns are both paying the same amount.
They are both paying, at the end of the day, whatever the invoice is, it will be split down the middle. It's just, we, you know, we're different boards, different administrators, we think differently and, you know, we'd rather be safe than sorry and have a little bit of wiggle room. And, I mean, again, they're not gonna get it if it passes, so it's not like it's, you know, doesn't even haunt, but, all right. Um, next is to let the board know that by, eh, tomorrow, Friday, you'll see an ad out there for summer help for the transfer station, uh, effective July first. It was approved in the budget, so it sounds like from talking to the superintendent, it's gonna be on Monday and Saturday, so there'll be a job posting out there soon. Spoke to the real estate agent today that's overseeing the Wilson Lake property that the town approved. Um, sounds like the mortgage company has approved and allowed that piece to let go, they're just, uh, waiting for an appraisal. Um, he is still very optimistic that we will close by the end of the month, based on that new information.
Yeah, we do.
Huh?
We have to by then, yeah.
Well, he knows that you would have to go back out to town meeting, but that's not gonna look good for anybody. Um, last is to let you know that, um, we are soliciting, um, a couple of attorneys, town attorneys, Drummond and Woodson, or Bergen and Parkinson. We have, uh, an issue, um, code-related and, uh, one other issue that our attorney is going to be a conflict and isn't gonna be able to help or give any advice to, so, um, we normally go to George and Parkinson as our first runaround, he's been a good backup attorney for us, he actually has a conflict, so we went to, uh, Leah Racham, who has been very good to us over the years, and, um, we have an attorney in Drummond and Woodson that was finally able to clear this name, so. We will be, uh, moving forward probably in agreement, you know, you'll have to approve an agreement to use him as needed, um, as situations arise, so. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, ladies update, Tom's not here, and. Sure. Well, let's see, Mary Grant, I don't have anything, Animal Control, I don't have anything, Transfer Station, um, as we reported last week, they are open Sundays now, right through Labor Day. The one thing they don't do on Sundays is they don't take, uh, demo, so it's strictly MSW, which is your bag trash and cardboard, things like that, but no, uh, no demo for the demo dumpsters on Sundays, just because it only opens so many hours and.
Yeah, so that's, I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? Is that new?
No, that was actually.
So.
If you, I remember it because going in last year, on Sundays, there is a sign up there that says no demo on Sundays.
Well, and it's interesting because just as you were doing that, so he sent an email saying that he had no, he, he circled it from the website, so Dan Crampits must have put it on there. And at the very bottom, it says, please don't on Sundays, you know, we don't take that.
Yeah.
Um, and the superintendent said that he had no idea, you know, when he worked last year, last summer, everything was normal.
Yeah, I don't think they took it on Sundays last year either.
No, he says they did.
Did they?
Yeah, Sunday is just like any other day, this last Sunday, we took everything, so he needs to know what the board's thought are.
Yeah.
And what we, we either need to be consistent, it can't be, you know, this Sunday it slows, so we'll take it.
Yeah.
So what do you guys wanna do? Do you wanna?
Well, I know in past years, they haven't taken it.
Yeah, he says they have been.
So, well, he's only been there one year.
Right.
But I do remember.
So what do you, what do you guys think?
If, if it's something that's been going on for years, then, uh, stick with it.
Yeah. I think the thing is, it's, it's only four hours that they're open.
Right.
On Sundays, uh, noon to four.
And it's busy and they need everybody to do their job.
Yeah, so.
I heard last weekend you filled two camps.
Mm-hmm, they had to bring another one in.
Just for household trash?
No.
Demo.
On Sunday?
The demo.
And Sundays, he says you accepted it on Sunday as well.
Yeah, so.
So you wanna leave it, there's no demo, was that in that letter?
I would leave it.
I don't know if it was in that.
Oh, I'm just.
I mean, I guess probably, it's, it sounds to me like it's working because if they're filling it up on Saturday.
Yeah.
Then you don't. Saturday is a big day for that, I mean.
I mean, if I'm, I'm just looking at it as, you know, on the weekend, I'm working, I might, you know, I wanna get rid of stuff I can't.
Right.
There, kinda sucks, but, um, but I mean.
We can still discuss it with the whole board.
Yeah, I mean, I just, if they're open, they're open.
Yeah.
It's my elegant.
Yeah, I agree with David, I'm not, you know, it's, it's hard to pick and choose, you know, if they're open.
That's fine.
And it hasn't, wasn't a problem last year, wasn't a problem last weekend.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care either way, it's just, I'm just saying how it was in past years.
Yeah, I just, I'm just looking at it like, you know, I'm all playing in my doyad, I wanna clean some stuff up, the whole day, I'm gonna go do it on the weekend.
True, and Sunday might be that day, yeah.
We're, we're in the busy season now anyways, we probably got a couple more busy weeks with people coming up and opening their camps and then it'll calm down again.
We, uh, no, we're, probably have an extra dumpster up there anyways for the demo, right?
It's gonna be an extra for both.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, either way, I just, yeah, that's all.
No, leave it for, do, do it open?
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they didn't have any problem last year, they did last Sunday, it was a, somebody, if there's any issue.
We're talking about getting, trying to get some summer time help anyways, right?
Right, he wouldn't, I don't think that one's gonna work on Sunday.
Oh, no?
Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, you just said that. Superintendent mentioned. Okay, so they'll be open on Sundays and they'll be taking demo on Sundays, so.
So I'll have to be in, so, okay.
Yep, um, secondly, the superintendent has done up a, uh, a guideline for the transfer station, it's a letter. He'll be handing it out, basically just talks about how to get a sticker, uh, what you need to do to get a sticker, what proper paperwork you need, uh, and there's one about, um, if you're renting, there's another little process to go through for that. Uh, talks a little bit about contract haulers, if they're bringing trash in for, you know, for hire, basically. Talks about the month of May being the only tire month, but I think they did what, six hundred and some odd tires?
Yeah, could've been.
In May?
And if you're hidden behind a goodie shop, I guess.
Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all, that's, that's what he's got up there, so.
Is there any, what is, what do we, what would we do if we have an individual in town, we, we, we had it yesterday? Remember, um, Don's sister there borrowing his truck?
Mm-hmm.
What do we do in that situation where somebody borrows somebody's vehicle?
Typically come up here.
Come up here.
Yeah, they come up here and we give them a temporary hand.
Okay, I, I, that's what we told them anyways, but I just wanted, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, so we've, we've been, and, you know, and some people, and, and I'll tell you off, off the record, because it surprised me, somebody gave us a really, a really hard time today, but the idea, I mean, you know, Acton is one of the last towns that doesn't charge for demo, probably most of York County, I mean, that's probably a pretty safe bet, so. Our staff is doing a great job in ensuring that only Acton property owners are getting stickers, so if your name is not on the property, if, on the property bill, the name on the property bill has to match a registration, so, and if, if, we've been seeing a lot of trusts, we've been seeing a lot of LLCs, they're having to prove that they're one of. they're having to prove that they're one of the trustees. So these family camps that twenty people come and stay at, we have these nice little hangars that are for household trash only. You leave it at the camp and anybody can drive up and use it. But you only get a regular sticker if your name is on the property owner. Two names, they can both have one, we don't care where the car's registered, we just do it that way. We have a lot of day passes, you know, this particular person that came up, she said she, you know, her brother was helping her clean a lot. I said, you know, we need five days, two weeks, I mean, we're reasonable, you know, we'll give them a free pass for the other vehicle for, you know, as long as they need. I mean, we're not being sticklers about it, we just wanna make sure that, you know, we're trying to protect the residents, the property owners, not just residents, and your taxes, so. We've got a solution for everything, just come and see me, we'll make one up.
Even though we, you know, we, we worked really hard to keep the prices of hauling the stuff away, it's still very expensive, so, you know, we, we only want, we only want our own trash. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Dan's at that meeting, John?
Oh, I don't have anything for the school cemetery and all, I've got the planning board is here, meeting tomorrow, that's it.
Oh, it's, you know, nothing, I'm in a small grounds, I gotta, I'm gonna go hold Mr. Dennis there end of this week, see what's going on here with the memorial.
And we did get that, we saw it, or maybe they just sent it to Tom and Lee, but we got the filed document back from the registry.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it's all official.
Awesome. Okay, department head, any chat updates? I don't see any. Okay, we're gonna go to old business, ambulance recommendation. Sir?
Uh, no, I specifically told you. I'll make sure I get them.
Good evening, everybody. So, as you're aware, we got two ambulance bids. I spent pretty much all day Friday, seventy-three hundred pages of documents from both companies. Went through, put some brief notes on here for you guys. Obviously recap of the price, the bid proposal, whether they filled it out or didn't fill it out. Warranties were very similar on both of them. Delivery time, very similar, it was two years, one's twenty-eight to thirty-two months, depending on availability of things. And whether or not they're able to meet the full bid spec that was requested. So on the back, I laid those key differences out. And my recommendation, my recommendation is that after thorough evaluation of the two bid proposals, we go with company A, specialty vehicles in the recommended, was recommended choice for our department and town. Their attention to detail with the bid process was phenomenal, all specifications were met and documented in their proposal. With the proven reliability, dependability, and service to the town, Acton and the department, I feel this is the best choice for our needs.
Is that where the price difference comes in?
That's where, I, I only suspect that's where the price difference comes in. If you read through the specs, company B, Autronics, did not do half of what was asked for. It looks like they took an ambulance spec and just put it in there. Didn't read the actual bid document because it says you gotta fill that out. What we submitted says that if you can meet it, you gotta check yes or no. Completely didn't fill that out.
Completely, my whole document. And the other questions.
Didn't do some of the stuff that was asked for, period. So you changed out certain equipment that we were asking for specifically, like the oxygen lift or a cylinder, I barely picked the thing up. They did a manual lift when, the current setup we have is electronic and we're keeping it all the same. They didn't, they just swapped stuff out on their own, didn't give it a reason why, so.
So they pretty much gave you a generic bid?
That's my speculation, I cannot confirm it.
If they, if they done apples to apples, they probably would have bid a lot higher than specialty.
Well, but we, but we told them in there that if they weren't able to, him and I, the last minute, we put something in there saying, if you can't, if you can't meet our minimum bid, you know, our minimum requirement for these taillights or whatever he wanted, then, you know, go higher, go with more higher standard and tell us that.
Right, to submit an explanation and to put something comparable in there, so.
But not going back.
They didn't document any of that that I could buy.
And specialty, basically, what they're proposing here is pretty much exactly what you have now with the upgrades.
Correct.
Is that, do we buy our previous ambulance from one of these companies?
Correct.
From?
That, that is the lifeline, especially, that's the same dealership that the tank truck is also purchased from. We have the service mechanic that we have, that's been doing a lot of our work, is their service mechanic that travels, covers almost every bay. So we're already using that business. They are actually, specialty vehicles is two, I think I wrote it in here. Two hours and twenty minutes away. Autotronics, their main facility office is in Frenchville, Maine, which is six hours and ten minutes. And they do have a service shop in Bangor, that's two hours and fifty minutes if it was to ever have to go there. So the closest place is Plaineville, Massachusetts, which is where specialty vehicles is at. If it ever had to go back to the condition.
So I did tell Wayne when we confirmed he's on the agenda that it was just informational for tonight. Obviously, we're waiting for not only the full board, but we've got some things out to bid, so he doesn't have to make a decision tonight.
Thank you. Okay, any further, for commissioners, scope of work.
Willie, I want you to take this one, because it may be in a little different order, we had some copy issues. Alright, so Will was in after our meeting last week and he's gonna go through these.
Alright, so I put together some scope of works here to try to get us through June. I'm assuming you guys all have the first ones that San Pedro on it. So right over here on San Pedro, at the corner of H Road, in San Pedro, there's that section of ditch right there. The last couple of rainstorms, you guys, it's washing off the side of the road, so we wanna go in there and just ditch that out, and there's a culvert in there, I think the culvert's clogged. So we just wanna ditch it out, clean the culvert out, fix the shoulder. I said two days, we'll probably be there for two days to get it cleaned up.
And what's the estimate, no material, just...
No, there's twelve yards of riprap that we might use for around the culvert there.
Sixty-nine, eighty-one, sixty? You good with that one, David?
Excuse me?
You good with that one?
Yeah.
Then the next one is our District Two, it's up on Youngs Ridge Road, in the area of French, French Road. I talked to a gentleman like late, late last fall, I believe in the wintertime. The water from the town road's going down Finch Road, so I told him in the springtime when I got caught up, we'd go up there and clean the side of the road up and try to get not to go down Finch Road. They've done a little bit of work there on their end, I told them, they kinda do some work on their end, we'll try to help them out, so. We'll probably, I think, we'll probably be able there just a day to clean up the shoulder and everything and try to help them not get it all the way down the road, because they've been, put some money into their road there, so I don't want the water coming out of the bottom and ruining their road and getting in the lake or anything. And the second one's up on Hopper Road from Bond Lights to House Address three oh nine. Go up there right now, you'll see the culvert's right, all the ditches are right, plowed, all these and everything. So we wanna just go up there and clean it out. We hit a lot of rain, I do have an issue sometimes, I gotta go up there and unplug all the culvert, so I just wanna go up through there and just do some maintenance, clean all the ditches out, clean the culvert out and everything. And then the last one is on West Road Drive, at seven thirty, West Road Drive. We get a lot of water pounding out in this section of the road. Actually, the homeowner called me this spring and we need him to talk about it. We get a little bit of rain, it's not too bad, but we get a lot of rain, it ends up going over the road and where it's going, it's going into his yacht and it's going over his leach field, so. We're gonna put one of these, I've installed them on the road before, the filtration catch basins. They got holes cool inside when you dig it out. You set the basin in, put your fabric in, and you fill it with inch and a half stone around it. Now, it seems to be working pretty good, but this, well, the previous road commissioners put in three, I put in two, and it definitely helps because there's just no way to put the water on that road, so. So we're gonna install that, pave all around it, I think we done the last two, and so we can get to them and clean them out. And they were great for that application there, so. That's what I have right now, and I think that will, that should get us through the rest of the month, so.
And then you had a quote, I don't know if it's on blank pages, but take down a quote from the NAST, that's for the culvert?
Oh, that's where I'll use the basin for.
The basin. And then go over these other, you had a Curtis and a...
Yeah, last week we talked, I believe you guys wanted some price sheets at gravel, so I put the two companies, I get most of my deal from my deal, I put the two price sheets in that I get every year, start in the springtime, they give us new price sheets. And if you go down through it, I mean, they're within a dollar, drew each other on most things, I mean, it's, it's not much.
I was looking at this the other day.
You typically haul usually the closest place.
Yeah, like, right now, like, we're working up, like you said, we, we're working up like Acton Ridge, H Road, we go to Southland Falls. We're working, yeah, West Road Drive, usually go to Curtis, with all the roadwork and everything.
What about the Monarch one, I thought I'd heard about, I'm happy to hear we low prices.
Ah, yeah, they do all this stuff by the time, but if you do the math though, it, it's come up like point one dollars a yard, most of their stuff. So it's right, it's right in line with their stuff, too.
March haul over there.
Huh?
You don't haul over there a lot?
No, no, well, it's not spec gravel, we, I went around and around, I went to finance one year and the road's gonna be about...
It's not what?
It's not spe, DOT spec gravel. So I went around and around one year with them about it, so, I mean, so I just...
What does that mean, David, personal people, that's... Does DOT doesn't look like it?
What it is, is, you know, if it's a dollar road, spec road, if it's a spec road.
He has to use certain quality?
Yeah, but, I mean, like over there in County Road, I can see that, but if you're, you're, you're putting a culvert, you know, like, it is what it is, you know, because the rest of the road ain't, but, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm working on some culvert pricing right now, I'm just waiting to hear back from one company that I use, so when I get that, I, I'll just give you guys what I, what I get, and I'll just, I'll just keep calling around every couple of weeks and when I get any, just do some culvert and I'll bring it back to you guys.
So, Will, how difficult will it, would it be, and certainly be honest with you, I'm not asking you to do this quite yet, but... So when you, let's just say you do this ditching on San Pedro from H Road to Mary Grant, when you submit the actual bill, is there any chance that you can, if I leave you copies, that you can attach, you know, like any open scope of work that we have that have been approved, I'm gonna write, you know, approved the date on it. If I leave them a folder in yours, in your mailbox, it just says, you know, approved. So when you get, when you put your invoice together, you could just staple this on the back of it. So what that does is saves a step when the treasurer gets it, she knows that the scope of work has been approved, she doesn't have to look at any of the numbers, prices, you know what I mean? Do you, do you bill out separately by product, by project, or would that be a pain for you to separate invoices?
No, usually we do one project and bill it for that.
Okay, so it would be, if you, let's just say you did all of these in one week, you would have five different invoices normally?
Yeah, that's how we're always...
So it wouldn't be too much work if I created a little folder? It would be helpful for us to see, and then compare the prices roughly. We know they won't be spot on.
So no subcontractors or anything?
I, no, I know, no, no, we're gonna do, we're gonna do it all ourselves.
Good. Okay, how's the book?
We gotta approve that, correct?
Well, the ordinance says that he will present a list of, I mean, there's no clear, but I think we can clean what we did.
Yeah, we usually did, yeah, so. Make a motion to approve the ditch on San Pedro. Youngs Ridge, Finch Road. Hopper to House three oh nine. West Road Drive, seven thirty, West Road Drive basin.
I'll start with it.
All in favor? Thank you, Will.
Yeah, thank you.
Want your license application by the way.
So remember the state is on their new system, so I do everything electronically, so it's gonna be the top page, you have the information.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Bond Lights Events and Weddings LLC. As Jennifer stated earlier, everything has been paid and signed and approved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I want for, we got a liquor license application for Iron Tails.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for Iron Tails Enterprises. Once again, everything has been paid and signed and approved, so.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we get done with this, so, public comment. Do I have any? We have it.
Hello. So I have a few things. So on the new report, there's some schedules that are on this report that have been in past reports.
Which schedule, specific one?
So, Schedule F, G...
Is it, you're looking at the auditor's report?
Yeah.
Okay.
Schedule F, G, H, I, J, and K.
So is it the long version, are you looking at, comparing the long version to the short version?
Well, I compared both, so the short version is usually twenty-one pages, it's ten pages this year. And so then I looked at the long report and it's missing on there, too. So I tried to figure out what it was, that there was some discrepancy with Schedule C and D, and so. I didn't know if you guys just personally...
No, we didn't leave anything out, so, well, I can certainly reach out to the auditor, review with Tom, and have a comparison of the long and short firms for next meeting.
Alright, perfect. So thank you for the police update, and because I was questioning that, you probably saw my comment.
I, I didn't, someone brought it to my attention, I try not to...
So, so I guess their second six months starts in July, right? Do you have the price on what their contract is?
I don't have the folder in front of me, we had a public hearing that we went over all those numbers.
Yeah, and I have, I have what you passed out, and those numbers are different than what you reported tonight, or that was in the budget, so.
What do you, can I see what you have? If you're saying you have what we passed out?
Yeah, so...
That doesn't, can I, I can't see it from there, I have to look at it to...
Well...
That doesn't look like the document we passed out at the public hearing. I can sort of get you a copy, but that doesn't look like it, but...
Alright, so I guess I just wondered, don't you have the amount yet?
His contract starts again at the end of December.
Right, January first.
Oh, I thought it was July.
No.
That's, that's when it starts.
Their union negotiations are on the calendar year. So we know what it's gonna be for the first six months, because you're right, from July one to December. We don't know what it's gonna be from January first to June thirty.
Okay, I was thinking it was the July period, I was gonna say you should have that by now.
No, because we're, we're, he's on a calendar year and we're not, so. We know his, we know his salary now, and, you know, to tell you the truth, that's what Chapley passed on their vote. So when he gets a raise in January, he's got the money.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah, so that makes sense. The thing about the police report, and I was, you know, it came up again tonight, I was thinking, when you were running through those call logs, I mean, the report in the town meeting has a lot more details about calls and, you know, how many times they responded percentage-wise and time spent. And wouldn't that be a better report than cherry picking a few...
Why cherry picking, let's start with saying that. The Sheriff's Department sends us what they call the notable events for each month, and they choose, that document that comes strictly from, from the Sheriff's Department, and that's what they call the most notable events for Acton-Chapley for the previous month. What they also send us is a full call log for the entire month of May. So, but that's gonna have, that has, has what you see in the town report, but just for the month of May, for Acton and Chapley. It's, you know, it's a full page listing. When we started getting these logs, the board made a decision that the notable events, you know, that we would update the public to some extent on those, but we do get a full monthly report, but it's, you know, it's every nine, it's not gonna be detailed of locations or anything, it'll just say, you know, hangups, motor vehicle accidents and so forth, but we get both.
A bit awful on me if we had to do this.
Well, I don't, I'm not suggesting you go through every single call, but maybe you post the report online, maybe there's a support, you know, a part on the website where people can get educated about the police presence in the town, you know, because there's some question about what... where people can get educated about the police presence in the town, you know, because there's some question about what they do, whether they're here, whether they're supporting the town. The other thing is, I wanted to ask about the extra police patrols for the speeding, where does that come out, what budget is that under?
So, what they did in May was grant money that the sheriff's department received, um, the town of Acton has done four-hour blocks in the past. If we found that there were areas of concern, the select board have authorized those funds to be spent out of a miscellaneous municipal management, um, you know, not out of the deputy contract line, but we have other places of miscellaneous expenses that built into our budget, should we need them.
They didn't request those, they just did.
Yeah, these last ones in May, though.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I said, we didn't request them, they just did.
Yeah, these May ones were by grant, they did them on their own, we didn't know about them until we read this.
Over and above what we normally pay.
Oh, I thought the past years you had asked them.
We have.
We have, we did have, but lately, we haven't.
Oh, so you hadn't requested those, because they were like two thou, that was like ten thousand one year, right?
Yeah, we, and we only did that because, you know, they say, you know, certain people are like, oh, East Shore Drive, well, East Shore Drive, there's a issue down there, you know, we asked to have a little bit more down there, da-da-da-da, so, uh, that's what we did.
But that was minimal, there were maybe fifteen hundred dollars, they weren't, it wasn't excessive amount.
Well, it ended up being like ten grand one year, and I was just.
Uh, no.
I feel like that's a little.
No?
No.
I thought there was five, two thousand, but anyway, um, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that fall under police budgeting, or, you said miscellaneous, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, the board has contingency lines and miscellaneous that, you know, that they can, you know, um.
We went above and beyond the contract, so we had to pay for.
Which they have a right to do, you know.
So, do you plan, so that's not something that's planned every year, that you work in the budget?
We did that because we were getting calls.
Like I said, when we had certain spots that were, you know, trouble spots, we would ask for it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we, we try not to, we don't want to spend any more money, we have to.
And our sheriff pretty much knows the trouble spots anyways, 'cause he's here, I know.
And I will say, too, this contract, this, um, report that you hear me read off at the beginning of the month, it is written in the town's contract, where they're required to provide that to us, so, um, as far as the doings in the town, so.
Yeah, we're just thinking, you know, you know, there's some questions and, you know, confusion around what they do and the amount of time, and I saw that report in the town, but.
Yeah, we do that with town report for the time of year, yeah.
Yes, so, well, thank you, appreciate it, let me get my pen.
Thank you.
Tony, Nate, you have something to say?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, too, related to the sheriff's, uh, contract. If I understand correctly, I think I looked at the chaply warrant, and that their warrant, the voters, if I remember correctly, they're approving, if they do so, contingent on it passing an act. Do you know if that's after?
I have the warrant article. I think it says in conjunction with, hold on.
Because they were gonna go all over the place anyways.
Well, in any event, if it does say that, I mean, whether it says it or not, the contract says it, so, if we, if Acton doesn't pass it, then Chapley is either gonna have to have a special time meeting to come up with the other half, or they're gonna dissolve it as well.
Or go to another town.
Or, yeah, they could go to another town, yeah.
And so the same would be true for us, ours doesn't.
Chapley's already passed. Town meeting, town meeting is in April, and it already passed.
Okay, I didn't know if theirs, I thought theirs was on for June.
No, they're going in just the school budget.
Okay, so that concern is.
It does say, yes, contingent upon the approval from the voters of the town of Acton, yes.
Okay, so, the other thing I just wanted to state for the people at home is, I would really consider, uh, encourage folks to read, uh, Sheriff King's letter written to the Reporter, the three newspaper, on May fifteenth, um, in which he's expressing his dissatisfaction with the Waterboro Select Board, I believe unanimously voting that their deputy's contract warrant ought not to pass. And I believe the majority of their warrant and finance committee also voted the same, ought not to pass. Then, on the next week, May twenty-second, again in the Reporter, the Select Board and the Budget Committee for Waterboro responded to the sheriff's letter, and outlined the reasons, because the, the sheriff accused them of wanting to, quote, "defund the police", which is a really politically charged statement, and inaccurate. And they, they responded and explained the reasons they voted the way they did, which were largely concerns about the contract, unanswered questions, inflexibility with the contract. And I think that those are similar issues that this board has discussed at different points. And, um, so I just, I encourage voters, before they vote, to, to, uh, maybe look at those two letters to the editor, and, um, consider it in deciding how they plan to vote. Thank you.
Sir?
Uh, quick question concerning the ambulance, are we trying to get any, uh, a grant?
Well, we, we, we do have somebody working on that.
Yes.
Um, in the meantime, um, but as, as of right now, I believe we're talking about putting it on for a vote, and during that period of time, and what, what are we talking, wait a couple of years before we get the thing?
Yes.
Yeah, so, in that, during that time, hopefully, we can land something in the meantime, would be great, if not, then money will be approved, we can move on.
And you're trying to get this on the ballot in November?
I know, it's gonna be sooner than that, oh, what's, we didn't talk, did we adjourn, we didn't adjourn? We need to talk about the, um, winter maintenance.
Right.
I need to get approval.
We'll finish up a public comment, and then I'll go as well, and backtrack.
Just made me, made me think of that, no, I mean.
Wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah, I know, I forgot, it's me, um, no, it's gonna be before November.
It has to be.
Yeah, yeah.
August, September, November.
Yeah. It's gotta be, well, it's gotta be, at least by the end of August, because you have to have a sole contract done by the middle of September anyways, so.
So, give me a time line. Is that it, oh, can we go back to it now?
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna, any more public comment? Nope, okay, we're gonna have to backtrack here.
Yeah, sorry, so, um, I sent you guys, uh, there's actually two things we need to discuss. Sent you guys the snowblowing, the attorney's looked at it, reviewed it, made some minor changes, David had an adjustment that him and I are working on, but other than that, um, David would like to have this out to bid by the end of the week, so, once I clean it up with him, with your approval, we'll be out by, by Friday.
Yep.
David, we're thinking three weeks?
At, at, at least three weeks.
You wanna go a little longer?
Um, it would hurt.
Well, that three weeks just puts us at the end of the month.
Okay.
This one, yeah, as long as, as long as we're granting, uh, so, what do we look at, end of June, so.
End of June, early July.
Right, so then.
I would do it the, the, the week after July fourth.
All right, so if we have them open on July ninth, let me just say, we can go ahead and, um, nothing says we can't schedule a public hearing, too, once we start getting our questions ready.
Yeah.
Um, who's the school liaison?
Dan.
So, you know.
You are?
You. Uh, we need to reach out to the superintendent and find out, uh, what the figure is regarding the teacher, remember, he spoke to us about, 'cause that would be an article on there as well.
Yeah.
So, if we have, so if we can get that done by the nineteenth, I mean, we could probably have an election, hmm, what do we think about, maybe August nineteenth?
It'd be perfect.
Or whatever, that.
But we'll, we'll, we'll already have our bid in anyway, so we'll know our number.
Well, right, right, so I'm just thinking public hearings and absentee, so, all right.
All right, I can reach out, uh, to Mr. Ross and see if they have any further information of what they're gonna be looking for.
We need a number, Tom, we're getting close to putting it all together, so. Um, the other thing we need to discuss, and I should've told you under my weekly update, is, um, the moring ordinance. So, uh, we've gotten legal opinion about the moring ordinance, remember, this time last year, uh, we were told by the Department of inland fisheries that, um, it wasn't enforceable, we needed to make some changes, so we kind of, luckily, it was towards the end of the season, and we've been working on it, the town's attorney's been working on it. Um, you know, without getting into a lot of detail, at this point, his recommendation is either to rescind it completely, or amend it to incorporate some type of permitting system. And we still have a lot of details to work out for that, and to, uh, reach out to people, but in speaking to Tom today, he thought it would be a good idea if we got all of our league associations, all the people involved or interested in this at a public hearing, so we can kind of discuss it, put everything on the table, what the attorneys and the fisheries are saying, and see what direction you guys wanna go with it.
Well, it's probably a good idea, so we were going to pass it, that we can enforce it, so.
So.
So, just to have, just to have, uh, sit down.
Just an informational public hearing, and the whole, everybody will be invited, but you certainly wanna make sure people that have interest in it, you know, come and give their, their views, so, I was thinking maybe June twenty-fifth, last Wednesday of the month?
Sure.
Uh, depending on agenda items, we don't normally meet the Wednesdays after elections. But we'll see how it goes, that's next week.
All right, whatever it may be.
Yeah.
And we'll see how it goes and what comes up, but, all right, so you're good with the twenty-fifth, and we said bids by the ninth. Thank you, sorry, I moved them up there.
Sorry, I think you did it all done.
That's fine.
Okay, I've pretty done the public comment, uh, I guess I'm looking for a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven oh three.
Seconding.
On table.